Recording in progress for Z 2200013, West Suburban Development Corp. We have a request for conditional use for recreational facility. And a variation to reduce required number of parking spaces to from 300 to 251. It's Downers Grove Township case. Approximately nine point nine and a third acres. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on March 9, 2022. We have no objections from the building department, no comments from DUDAT, Health Department, no objections. Stone Water indicates no objections with the concept, but additional information will be needed. Public Works has no objections. Name, take their sewer and water in the immediate area. And then area, no objections. Our Ridge, no comments. Village of Willbrook, no objections. Downers Grove, no comments. Township Highway has an objection. Concerned with traffic exiting the facility recommends no. State Fire District, objections. District School, 53 and Forest Reserve, sorry, District School of 63, no comments. Forest Reserve is a letter that will be our record. Mr. Wukans, could you start by introduce suggesting your exhibits, please? And then introduce your witnesses.
Yes, for the record, Phil Wukans, oh, you'd be a T53. That's quite two plants with chair.
Can we start with the survey?
Yeah. On the board is the survey, exhibit one. Backside of that is site plan, which is exhibit two. It's here from everybody.
You know what? We can't, I can't at least hear what he's saying.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cutter, I'll speak forever, I've forgotten. That's my apology. The mic's up there at the podium, but he's kind of walking around introducing exhibits.
I'll try and go from there. I don't think I've informed anybody. Let me try and do this. I apologize, Mr. Cutter, I forgot, Ms. Anderson, I did not realize. Let me walk through the exhibits, then Mr. Carpo. And then I'll hand out additional copies to the board that are here tonight that they may not have seen. The third exhibit is the standard analysis that we presented. We filed with the county a few days ago. The fourth is called land uses. That's the surrounding land use and zoning plan. The fifth is a landscape plan, which again, we have right here. The traffic study is exhibit six. Exhibit seven, we've entitled Parking Calculations. Exhibit eight is the Dark Skies Resolution by the County of DuPage. Exhibit 10, I'm skipping exhibit nine. Exhibit 10 is the landscape easement we'll be talking about. Exhibit 11 is a drawing showing a deceleration or right-hand turn lane into the site. Exhibit 12 is a parking, I guess it's the I T E parking standards that Mr. Worthman will talk about. Exhibit 13 was an auto, is an auto terms analysis. It's probably no longer relevant. It was being done for the fire district, but they've now withdrawn their objection now that we've given this to them. Exhibit 14 is a photograph, which will discuss. Exhibit 15 are proposed conditions that we are suggesting, along with whatever conditions the board would like to recommend. Exhibit 16 is the tri-state letter where they are pulling the original objection. And Mr. Carpo said there was no objection, but until a few hours ago, there was one. We've been in discussion, so they've now no longer have an objection.
Right, we have a couple of other things that are set in our places.
Those are copies of, what's the rendering? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, the renderings I did not list as an exhibit, I apologize on this that. You have, if we can list, I think there's three, two or three renderings? How many are there? I'm sorry.
Well, I have two.
There are two renderings, yeah. If we can list those as exhibit 17, if it's acceptable to the chair.
Valuable rendering is a little questionable, but we'll take it as 17.
Yeah, and then what else do you have, Mr. Carpo, that?
I've got an additional copy of the survey, which was already marked as one, and then what's, is this?
That's, that's a copy of the site plan.
Okay, so that's.
That's two.
Is two.
Yes, sir.
I guess duplicates of surveys, et cetera. So, all right, now your witnesses.
Okay, well, we have with us today Joe Abel, land planner, who was here mostly for questions. We have Norm Gill, who will be the operator of the facility. He will testify. We have Michael Worthman, W E R T H M A N N, who will testify shortly. Brett Duffy from Spaceco, D U F F Y, and Mr. Worthman from KLA, and Joe Lewis also from Spaceco. But I think the only three who will testify, hopefully, and very shortly, will be Mr. Gill, Mr. Worthman, and Mr. Duffy.
Joe, in case you need to just ask a question, would you all stand this order?
You disalliance swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this cause and hour hearing be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you back.
I do.
Thank you for your time tonight. I represent the West Suburban Athletic Development Corporation, which is the applicant here. Let me do one cleanup. I think in the application says this property was going to be on well and septic. It's going to be on sewer and water. So I want to make that very clear. I would like to spend a moment going through the site plan. Plan of survey is already here. The study is approximately eight acres, zero, three acres. We're seeking a conditional use to allow a sporting facility, indoor sports facility, along with a variation from parking from 300 spaces to 251. I think maybe exhibit three in the application might, exhibit three might have said the required parking was 340 something. We mis-calculated in Paul and Jessica gave us the right calculation. So the, if you see any discrepancies, 300 is the correct number. As you may recall, some of you who were on this board 18 months ago. My clients were here about 18 months ago with a much more robust and involved plan for a 16 and a half acre site. So double the size of the site, but it required numerous variations. There was a sign variation, we're not seeking a sign variation. There was a 80-foot-high dome being requested. The size of the, the ceiling now is at 36 feet, which is allowed under the, under the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the prior building was 90,000 square feet approximately. Now we're down to 75,000 square feet, so about a 17% reduction. Prior request had outdoor and indoor activities, particularly outdoor turf fields being lit at night and adjacent to residential properties. There are no outdoor facilities, outdoor soccer fields, et cetera, in this project anymore. This is purely an indoor sports complex, nothing else. The last plan, the last plan sought variations. No variations, or setback variations, no setback variations are requested. The last plan sought to various to allow the site to provide 215 parking spaces for the 16 acres. We're asking for, we're providing 251 over the eight, over the eight acres. So we're providing 250, 45 more, 26 more spaces over just for a much smaller, for a smaller use. We are not requesting a restaurant or a bar. As I said, we are seeking options around the district. We're also seeking that in the R2 zoning district on a site that is only eight acres, that it not allows for a significant buffer between it and residential properties to the south. The leases are much more contained than women. As you will see, this land use plan, which the subject property is outlined in hashed white. If you can see it, there is approximately 800 feet to the south between that property and any residential property lines. There is no outdoor lighting other than for parking. And so we're proposing a conditional use in the R2 zoning district, as I said, along with a single variation. The project really has two smaller, quarter maybe by 90-foot indoor turf fields. Those are about 60% of a full-size field. Full regulation barrel ball courts. Second floor contains an 8,000-square-foot speed and agility training area and a couple of batting cages. There will be concession-type food, space for the tenants and the staff. There is no workout health club facility attached to this. It is all 100% programming-based activities. We control who comes in, there's no walk-ins. We control everybody who comes in, and we control where there's events here. So as I provide my overview of the project, and you will hear an oral testimony, the subject property and the proposed conditional use meets the standards of the zoning ordinance for conditional use and the granular variation. To further lessen the impact on the surrounding area, we're also proposing conditions. Jess, could you hand exhibit 15 out? In addition to those you may wish to place on your recommendation. Mr. Carpo has one, Miss Moselski, my associate is handing out the conditions, but I'll be discussing them right here. Especially new standards, I'll go right through. In harmony with the general purpose of the town, this chapter will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to public welfare, or in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan. The proposed use is conditional use, as I said, in an R2 district and is accordingly presumed to be an appropriate use for the area in G Y R. I'd like, I'll take a second to discuss some of the surrounding land uses. Looking at exhibit four. To the to the east of our property is a single residential building that has significant equipment parking, truck parking, and then further to the rest of that is residential as well. To the west of our property, however, is the Forest Reserve District property, which is zoned I-1. The county zoned that about 10 years ago, and then the Forest Reserve District bought it. And to the west of that is a distribute, large distribution center, I think about 125,000, 150,000 square feet. And to the west of that is the Darian public works. And the west shows that the property would eventually be developed as something other than as a residential use. By an exit transition from the public works facility and the distribution facility located to the west to the residential areas to the east. The proposed use is consistent with Darian's comprehensive plan, which shows the subject property as office. This type of facility is included in conditional leases in the office district as well, under Darian's zoning ordinance. As I said earlier, there will be no proposed activities or no proposed outdoor sporting activities will take place on the subject property that is set forth in our proposed condition one. The building is located, as you can see, on the far western which is probably portion of the property closest to the Forest Reserve and furthest away from residential. It's kind of the northwestern corner of the property to keep it away from, as far away from any residential as possible. As I said, there's now an eight-and-a-half acre buffer to the south of our property between any residential properties. And it's about a 700-foot, 700, 800-foot in distance between the subject property, it's actually 700 feet in distance. I think I might have seen me on it, between the subject property and the residential properties to the south. Could you hand out exhibit 14, please? Jessica is now handing out exhibit 14, which is a shot from, taken by a drone at 32 feet from the, what will be the corner of the building. She'll go to the south and southwest. As you can see on that drone shot, can I have a copy of that, Jess, when we're done? There are no residential properties that can be seen, at least south and south, south and southeast, excuse me, from the corner of the building. There is a lot of large vegetation already existing. The property you're seeing to the south is an existing barn that is not on our, on the lot and is not on our property. There are no, as I said, there's no homes to the west of the subject property, because it is owned by the Forest Reserve. And I discussed a review of the property to the east. As will be discussed under standard number four, the property, we're going to cause a traffic problem for the area, and I'll talk about that. That's, the traffic study is exhibit six. The shield the residential properties to the south and southwest from headlights going through the parking lot. A four-foot opaque fence will be installed along the entire southern border of the parking lot in more than 50% of the eastern border. So there will be a four-foot fence away from the southern portion of the property lot to about half, two-thirds north on the eastern border to avoid, and there are, to avoid lights shining, if they can even get through what you see on this, on exhibit 14, light shining on any residential properties. And that again is a condition, proposed condition number two that we are proposing. Additional envision significant landscaping, including six-foot fir trees will be attributed to those areas as further buffer from residential properties. This is a little unusual, and I'll tell you why in a second. And I don't know how well you can see this, but our property boundary, as you'll see in the far south end, you'll see a whole row of evergreen fir trees. Our property boundary ends directly to the north of that. And you may say, well, how am I able to promise you that there's going to be landscaping on property that we own? And I think it's exhibit 11. Is that the landscape easement? Let me see real quick. Exhibit 10, which Jessica hand out, we have a landscape easement between us and the current owner of the property to the south. A permanent landscape easement that allows us to landscape and maintain those 20 feet with those fir trees, fir and fir. So it's for essential easement, and we will be able to, so besides this fence, we've also created this large buffer to the south and the southeast. A lot of that was requested by Ms. Painter, by half of the Timber Lakes Homeowners Association, and we've complied with her requests in that regard. I've had Zoom meetings with the Town Home, with the Property Owners Association, and many, many conversations with Ms. Painter, who is the president of the association, which is, which is mostly, I think, to the south. This landscape is over and above, which required the zoning ordinance and the landscape ordinance. We'll also agree to implement and set forth in condition number three, proposed condition number three, a five-minute monitoring plan that will replace any dead vegetation or vegetation that does not take within that time period. Again, that's something the homeowners association requested, and we have agreed to. Something else the homeowners association requested was to minimize traffic and lighting issues in the neighborhood at the facility with all outdoor activities to occur between the hours of 7:00 and 11:00, 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. All lighting except for security lighting will be off between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. While more, and that's set forth again in proposed condition number four. While lighting outside of facilities in the area are open much later, these limited hours will assist in alleviating lighting concerns that the neighbors may have. Further, the security rights in the building should be pointed downward, and all lighting at the facility will comply with the DuPage County Resolution E N dash R 0215 dash 21, which Jessica will hand out right now as exhibit five, which was enacted April 13th, 2021, supporting the international dark skies recommendation. And it's also one of the requests by the Forest Reserve District, was to make sure that we comply with that dark skies resolution, and we are meeting that request. So that is one of the items in their letter setting forth the concerns. Oh, sorry, it's exhibit eight. All right, so, yeah, it's exhibit eight, sorry. To further lessen the effect of the city we have on the surrounding neighborhood, there will not be allowed any concerts at the facility. Hence, proposed condition number six, nor shall outside grilling be allowed, and that's set forth in proposed condition number seven. Further, the only signage on the building, permanent signage not on the building will be a monument sign at the front entrance in compliance with DuPage County saying ordinance. And that is set forth, we're agreeing to that as hopefully proposed condition number eight. The Forest Reserve Board began in front of you, made certain lower requests. First one was that the outdoor storage of waste will not be allowed within 150 feet of Salome Creek, which is the creek, as you can see going through, and it's mostly, and is a large part of the southern border of our property. We have gone one step farther and asked that a condition be entered that we not be allowed to put that outdoor waste facility within 250 feet. We've also agreed that that will be, in the condition that that will be fully enclosed and fully screened. I don't think we have much choice probably on that one, but it's not that good to put it in. Further, the Forest Reserve also requested that no coal tar or other polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. I can spell it later for you, don't ask me how to say it. Should be noticed that ceilings, um, severies the ceilings. We've, we've agreed to that, and that's proposed condition number 10. The Forest Reserve also requested that all landscape planes be loaded to the Chicago region. Again, that is proposed condition number 11, and we've, and we've agreed to. The Forest Reserve District also requested that no mulch be used on the path through the Salome Creek floodplain. I think that they believe this was going to, that the only Salome Creek floodplain is right here, that we're entering with any paths. We're not actually putting mulch, that's just a culvert that already exists that we're going to use. It's a concrete culvert, there's no mulch that's going in to the floodplain in any way, shape, or form. Number two, and I promise I'll be quicker, was that it will not impair the adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. As I said, it's a 36-foot-high building, it's not near any residential properties. It's closest to the Forest Reserve, and the Forest Reserve has not stated any objection to that. Three, there is no optimization of any of land in building with a senior proposed conditional use. Given the distance and setbacks from nearby residences and other private properties, as well as all the precautions and proposed conditions being taken to not affect the area, transportation of the welfare of the site will not affect property values. The conditional use is consistent with the underlying zoning and as a conditional use, absent extreme circumstances, is seen to be as consistent with the zoning in this surrounding neighborhood. Thus, property values will not be detrimentally affected, especially when you consider that this area is trending more industrial than anything else. Four, we're not due to increase traffic congestion in the public streets and highways. Mr. Worthman will talk about that in a few minutes. We did an updated traffic study versus the one you saw 18 months ago, which has been done using counts when children are in school. I know that was a concern the last time. That, that study shows that the use will not undo increased traffic congestion or traffic safety in the area, and that's exhibit six. Mr. Worthman from KLA will discuss that study further. But to alleviate additional traffic from entering the neighborhood, so if you go to the west, one of the concerns was that someone would leave our property, go west, and then come to the south, or to the east, excuse me, and go east and come to the south through Timber Lakes. We've done a fair amount of things, and they're so, and proposed condition 15, to try and avoid that. That was also one of the large concerns of the Township Highway Commissioner. One is that the angle glass and wheelbase on Frontage Road will be channelized. Anybody in such a ways to make any embrace or egoist to the property from Frontage Road are difficult. As you will see, we have, this is not going straight to Frontage Road, we are angling it. So anybody who is going to make, try and make that Frontage Road turn, not that we, I know someone probably will. I mean, we can only do so much, we know what the public's like. But in essence, about a, it won't be a 70-degree turn, I guess it'll be about a 60, 65%, 60, 65-degree turn. So they'll have to cut back. They will also allow to seek to obtain approval from the local jurisdictional authority to have signs placed on the Frontage Road indicating no left turn onto the subject property. They will also place signs on the subject property indicating that existing, or that, excuse me, exiting eastbound is prohibited. So we'll have left, left turn only signs or right, no right turn signs. Further, the facility's website shall only indicate directions to the facility from Cass Avenue or from the west onto the Frontage Road. Any directions we give, I can't help what GPS or wave or, you know, someone else may give, Google, but we will only indicate directions coming from the west. We are also agreeing today, and it's in the condition 15 perent five, and Jess, if you could hand out exhibit 11, I think it is, to add a deceleration line, what is that shown in the site plan, the way it's shown on exhibit 11? There was some concern about queuing up on Frontage Road as people came into this facility or dropped off, as well, and the concern about not blocking traffic. So at a, you know, pretty good expense, the clients have agreed, if you approve this, to provide a deceleration line as is set forth in exhibit 11. That was something that the Highway Commissioner requested as well. I know the Town Home Association, the Town, no, excuse me, Timber Lakes Homeowners Association requested that, and it's something we've agreed to provide. The only other concern the Highway Commissioner seemed to have was about existing, the existing intersection of Frontage Road and Cass, which is somewhere down in this area. That's a county area, Mr. Worthman will talk about it more. DUDAT is doing a study on the best way to solve this problem. It's an existing problem that we're not adding a lot to. But I don't think anybody's suggesting it's not a problem. But DUDAT is looking at that, and the study is in the process of being done by the county as to how to solve that issue. Mr. Worthman will further testify about that. Number five, does not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent property. We have Brett Duffy here from Spaceco, who can talk about, well, he can answer your questions. I'm not going to talk about floodplain and stormwater, but it's being, the property is being constructed to comply with all DuPage County stone water ordinances and floodplain mitigations. Mitigation of floodplain disturbances being accomplished on the property. That's these two compensatory storage areas to the southeast and southwest of the property. And of course, obviously, we'll have to comply with all DuPage County stormwater regs, et cetera. Number six, we're not going to incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief. There's no additional expense for this, and as you now see, I think in, what's the last exhibit? 16, Jess, if you could hand out. Tri-State has now provided a letter saying that they have no objection to the development. And I think Mr. Carpo has updated sales reports something as well. All right, number seven, last of the special use conditions. Will not otherwise endanger public health, health, safety, comfort, morals, or general welfare of inhabitants. As shown above, detailed actions are being undertaken to ensure that the subject property shall not impair the public health, safety, welfare, et cetera, of DuPage County. Further, there was some question of making sure that children do not try and traverse our property and use the property to the south for games, et cetera. We have, besides the fence, they've also put a We have, besides the fence, they've also put a gate for access, so that anybody, I guess if they want to get to Salt Mill Creek, I guess I can't help it if they try and swim, but I don't think that's likely. Hopefully, our parents and our community are a little more aware than that. So, that's, we've clearly made the standards for conditional use, as you know, for variation standards, they're based on the same standards as a conditional use, but also have an additional showing. The application is seeking a variation from the required three hundred spaces to two hundred and fifty-one. In this case, the hardship is created by the fact that the zoning ordinance is not designed for this kind of use, but more for places of assembly or health clubs. Just with the study's only type of use, unlike churches, health clubs, meetings, concert venues, soccer fields and volleyball courts have a limited number of users due to a limited number of participants at any one time. In the ordinance, there is another type of way to measure parking for things like handball courts. Handball courts, it's so many parking spaces per court, because we know you can't play more than four people in a court right at a time. What we've done, and you'll hear the analysis we've done, as to how we get to the two hundred and fifty-one, we actually think the two hundred and thirty-eight is the worst-case scenario, we provided an additional thirteen. Based on the programming and the fact that programs will be scheduled at every, will be staggered, and we will not have all the courts or all the fields be at ten o'clock and eleven o'clock games, or ten, eleven, twelve, there will be ten, ten-thirty, eleven, or ten, ten-twenty, ten-forty, eleven, so you won't have this doubling up, because I've done a few facilities, as I know many of you have, where at that twenty minutes, twenty minutes, or ten minutes before the game starts, or ten minutes after, it gets really crowded. If there is, the queue in there, there are a little bit of variation, we'll, we'll help, but we have Mr. Duffy here, who has run a number of these facilities throughout the country, and he will talk about how he's going to handle that. The hardship for the property is also created by the amount of floodplain located on the property, Mr. Duffy will talk for a few seconds about that, and that obviously needs to be mitigated for, and that has lessons, the ability to utilize the property. We would suggest that this use is much more analogous to those, like handball courts in the zoning ordinance, that allow for use based on the number of participants, rather than a health club, where you have many people showing up at one time, at seven o'clock in the morning, you can't schedule how many people are using all the equipment, or five in the morning, five in the evening, this will be scheduled, and a lot of us, a lot of you, the parking is required, is safe, we're suggesting we will do everything we can to prohibit parking in Frontage Road, we will be talking to the Township Highway Commissioner to try and get whatever approvals we can, just have no parking signs out there. Finally, both Mr. Worthman and Mr. Gill will discuss how the number of parking spaces proposed is sufficient for the facility, and in some, we believe, will meet the variation standards for this type of facility. I am going to ask, why don't I ask Mr. Duffy to talk first, because he's probably the shortest, and we'll keep this moving unless you have any questions for me at this time.
Yeah, can I just clarify a couple of things? You have Proposed Condition Four is hours of operation are seven AM to eleven PM, you didn't indicate that, am I correct? So we cover the hours of operation issue?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I did, but that is correct.
Maybe I missed it. And is that twelve months a year?
Yes, sir.
Seven days a week?
Yes, sir.
And lighting, Proposed Condition is that lighting except for security will be off between the hours of midnight and six AM, I just state that for the record. What's your, you don't show a garbage disposal on the?
Yeah, you know, the new landscape plan, that we kind of just dealt with that, but the new landscape plan you have in front of you shows the garbage disposal to be in this corner, that will be fully.
Is it private garbage?
Yes, yes.
All right, could you just show them on the side plan, because that's the offer?
Well, revise the side plan to show that, we, this has called in kind of the last thirty-six to forty-eight hours on the line, on the lease, sorry.
Is your use limited to a membership facility, I think I recall it was before, but is this open to the public?
I guess it's, you know, it's, it's not open to the public, it's a membership only in the fact that we have teams that will be playing, et cetera, and they're, they're members and they're participants, it won't be, we won't have it.
Okay, I get it, sorry, both, you gotta be a member of something.
Well, they might have to sign up with us to play in the league or something like that.
Okay, I'm sorry, oh, one more thing for clarification, you referred a couple of times to various conditions, your page one shows conditions up through thirteen, and then the sheet that I have starts over with two, three, four, five.
So, I think thirteen, and I think I may have called it sort of fourteen, but it's actually only thirteen.
And fifty, oh, maybe you were referring to exhibit fifteen.
I think it was.
Thirteen conditions, and the thirteenth condition is the suburbs?
Yeah, because they're all related to highway and.
Thanks. Wait till everybody, I still have to clarify the targets. Okay, let's finish your witnesses and then we'll.
Yeah, Mr. Duffy.
Brett Duffy from Spaceco, engineer. Good evening, Brett Duffy was Spaceco, nine-five-seven-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois. Thanks, Phil, as Phil indicated, we will be developing the property to meet the DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance regarding stormwater retention, floodplain requirements, and wetland requirements as well. Salt Mill Creek does flow through the southern side of the property, there is associated floodplain wetlands and floodway there, within the corridor of Salt Mill Creek, that does limit some of the ability to develop this property, we're not allowing any floodplain flow, we do, we have to compensate for it a hundred and fifty percent, we've got wetland buffers that we need to maintain, there will be a wetland impacts as part of this project, but there are buffers that we're going to need to adhere to as well, so there are some psychic trends relative to that that we're dealing with, and we will address those per the county code.
I abbreviated the comment from, when I recited comments from various departments, I abbreviated the comment from stormwater, but to discuss it a little further, it says that you're working with stormwater to resolve stormwater issues, are there any considerations on the property?
That's correct, yes, so I, we'll be working with them for that as well.
This time, we would ask Mr. Gill, or Gill. Good evening, Norm Gill, Louisville Detective, on the drive. So, I am the managing partner of a company called Temple Indoor Sports, we've owned and managed dozens of indoor facilities, we've helped develop from scratch some sixty of them across the country, various aspects, I've been doing this for about twenty-five years, I used to own six of them myself, that we ran on a day-to-day basis, so I think we had kind of a unique hands-on experience in what it takes to do this. As has been stated earlier, one of the not necessarily intuitive elements of this is that it is one hundred percent scheduled, we have no walk-up business, there's nothing that we offer that would have someone driving down the road and pop in and kick a soccer ball, we just don't have any offerings that allow that to happen. As stated, you know, no fitness or anything that would just, even by a quote-unquote member, that would spur them to stop in unscheduled or unplanned. And generally speaking, we program everything, we don't rent out parts of our facility for somebody else to do other activities that we would not know or control, so we, we own what we run. I've been asked to address the request for the parking variance, because it's been stated before, it's, it's really a calculation that we can do, so we've taken, and I believe it's exhibit seven, and I know it's small, I apologize, but we've, we've kind of programmed out the worst-case scenario, meaning the densest-case scenario we would have, and that in fact would be on a, primarily on a weekend, when we're playing games, when each asset within our building has a competition on it, so each volleyball court has two teams, each soccer field has two teams, and I only bring that to the point that says, for the majority of the weekday business, Monday through Friday, we have practices, and those practices don't have two teams, they have one team who's practicing on each of the venues, for about as half as many people, so we really have tried to put together a model that demonstrates we have the parking capacity as planned to meet the densest use of our facility. Just getting into the minutia for a second, we're also able to know, or we do know, with rare exception, that within each of those uses, how many these players, these teams put on their roster. Generally speaking, a volleyball team puts ten players on their roster, they do that so they can practice against one of them. Same thing, basketball's a minor side of this, volleyball is a higher use, that's why we use that in our model. So for volleyball, we said there were ten, ten girls primarily on each team, each team has a coach, we have four courts, for soccer, again, as mentioned, these fields are smaller, they don't play eleven v eleven like outdoor, they generally play six v six, and once again, our history shows that on average, there are ten players on a team, there's a coach for each team, albeit that the coach is usually a mom or dad whose child is on the, on the field, and we have a referee for each, each of those games. In addition to that, it takes four staff members to run this on a, in this scenario. Upstairs, we have about eight thousand square feet of speed and agility or sports performance training space, so for this scenario, we've booked that out at capacity, and we would have two classes going on up there, eight kids each in them, and then an instructor. And finally, we do have a proposed tenant space, and even on a Saturday, I went on and assumed they might have since the tenant, the proposed tenant space is more of a physical therapist, so their primary business is going to be Monday through Friday, nine to five, very rarely, you know, a large element when we are at our busiest, but we went on and said, what if they had three employees on? So if you'll trust me just for a minute, that calculation adds up to a hundred and fifty-nine parking spots, if we're totally full, at the highest and dense use, and then we have to turn the facility over, right, and as mentioned, we don't turn it all over at the same time, for our own sanity, that's one of it, but also to alleviate some of the congestion just coming through our front door. For this model, we've said that we're going to turn half our facility over on the hour, and half of it on the half hour, so two volleyball courts and one turf, and then on the half hour, we turn the other one over. So I've added fifty percent more parking for those people that are waiting to go on the courts, and have to park in the parking lot, or staging indoors to go on, so if you add that up, we're at two hundred and thirty-eight spots, that we are required at our busiest, densest use, and we have two hundred and fifty-one. And as Phil commented earlier, I have used, he used the handle, I used the, well, I used the analogy right against this, our soccer field is twenty thousand square feet each, so by your, so many regulations, at four cars per thousand, we would need eighty spots to accommodate that square footage. In our scenario, even if we had a game going on with two teams, two coaches and a referee, and two teams and two coaches waiting to come on, we have a total of forty-five participants, and we assign one car to each participant as the densest use, because you don't have to overly deal with any spectators, because for youth activities, the spectators drive the participant to the event, and if we should run an adult event, there are no spectators, nobody comes to watch us run up and down the field, unless you just started dating or something. So, that's how we have come to address the, the number of spots we're requesting, as I made the point, during the week, it's primarily practice, and will be a fraction of that, and another small note, only because we've mentioned the Frontage Road, we do allow for parents to drop their, their kids off, say for a practice at, at five o'clock or whatever, and we will have summer camps, we will have about eighty campers a day, that will, the parents could swing in and drop off, there's a two-hour window for them to do that in the mornings, and two hours in the afternoon, but my point to this is that there was some concern about queuing for pickup, we do not allow unescorted children to be picked up, you must park your car, get it come in and sign your kid out, or at least meet them inside in the presence of one of our staff. Too big a risk management in this day and age to let a nine-year-old wander out and get into a car that we just assumed it was the right car, so we don't, there won't be any issue with, with queuing on pickup, because we don't allow, so. That's all I have to say, I can answer any questions.
Michael Worthman, WBRTH, good evening. As Phil said, Michael Worthman, with KLA, traffic engineer, with the firm of Kennick, Lincoln, O'Hara, Bonneville, Inc., licensed professional engineer in the state of Illinois, and practicing now for about thirty years. We were retained to perform the traffic study for the proposed facility, as you've heard, it's located on the south side of Frontage Road, northwest of Cass Ave. It's an indoor-only facility, two turf fields, smaller fields, as Norm just said, six on six, seven on seven, three courts, a training area, a community room, and a concession area, two hundred and fifty-one parking spaces, I've heard the hours of operation, seven to eleven, and summer camps that Norm brought up, those will operate from nine to four, and those are for a two-to-three month, probably two-and-a-half-month period in the summer only. Given the characteristics of the facility, the volume of traffic that will be generated, or the impact on the roadway system, will be reduced for several reasons. The first is except for the summer camps, the facility is generally closed during that morning commuter peak period, between seven to nine. Why the facility will be open, the amount of traffic coming in at that time is very low, so we're not generating a significant volume of traffic during that critical morning peak hour. Most of the programming for the uses doesn't begin until after five PM, based on the operation of the facility. The peak periods of the facility occur on weekday evenings, after that evening peak period, and on weekends. This is significant as we are not generating a significant volume or reduced volume of traffic during the critical morning and evening peak periods, when traffic is at its highest levels. Once again, our peak periods are in the evening or on Saturday, when the volumes on the roadway system are much lower. For example, Cass Avenue on a Saturday midday peak hour, which is about one to two, carries about fifty percent of the traffic that is on the road during the evening peak hour, weekday evening peak hour, so the volume is half of what you have on the busiest time during the weekday. So the operation of the facility really helps in reducing the impact on the roadway system. Access to the facility, as Phil went through, will be provided via one access drive under the Frontage Road, to minimize any impact on the neighbors to the northeast, this access drive will be restricted to inbound right turn movements and outbound left turn movements, so all traffic will be coming up from the southwest and exiting to the southwest on the Frontage Road. The access drive will provide one inbound lane, one outbound lane that's channelized to prohibit that movement, as Phil said, we will provide appropriate signage to indicate what turn movements are prohibited along the Frontage Road, as well as the access drive, and the outbound lane will be under stop sign control. Once again, as Phil said, he stole most of my thunder tonight, they, the client has agreed to put the right turn lane, a separate right turn lane on Frontage Road, that will pull that slower-moving traffic that's making the turn out of the through lane on the Frontage Road, this is a request by the Highway Commissioner and some of the residents. Overall, the impact of the facility, the roadway system, we looked at seven, eight intersections in the surrounding area, all of the intersections, that sufficient reserve capacity to accommodate this additional traffic, as we are. As we all know, the Cass Avenue, or the Frontage Road at Cass Avenue does experience some delay, some queuing during the peak periods, particularly the morning and evening peak periods. Any delay here is mainly due to the vehicles that are making a left turn from the Frontage Road to southbound Cass, or that are crossing Cass Ave because they're waiting for a gap in both directions of Cass Avenue. Right now, that volume of traffic is really low during the peak hours. Most of the traffic coming out of Cass Avenue is making a right, going north on Cass Avenue, or getting to the interchange. Similarly, similarly, excuse me, the majority of the traffic that's coming to and from the facility will be coming from the interchange into the north. We're expecting about 70% to 75% of the traffic traveling that way. As such, it will be making a right turn out. That movement can be done much quicker. We will add some limited delay in queuing, however, it's not going to be anything significant to that extent. So overall, the volume of traffic during those critical peak times is significantly reduced. The roadway system does have sufficient capacity to accommodate the traffic. And the design of the access drive is more than sufficient to accommodate the traffic and has been designed to protect the residential areas to the northeast of us. I will be here for any questions that you have. Thank you for the time.
Just one last question. In your report...
Oh, one big thing I forgot. Regarding Cass Avenue, as Phil indicated, the county is conducting a study, studying this spring on the Cass Avenue corridor. They indicated that should take about 12 to 18 months to look how they can improve the corridor. Oh, I got to talk parking too. Yes, I'm sorry. Do you want to ask your question, and then I'll go to parking?
No, just go ahead and park.
Okay.
Mr. Carroll, I'm sure he'll have whatever he has.
Okay. I'm so sorry about that. So as you've heard, there's a variance in the parking from 300 to 251. What we did is looked at the trip generation, parking generation rates provided by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They have a parking generation manual, the fifth edition, that has parking rates for various uses. And one of the uses is soccer complexes. And those rates show that a field averages, a peak demand on a field is about 63 vehicles. So each field has a peak parking demand of 63 vehicles. With 251 spaces, we can accommodate four fields, approximately. We have two fields based on the IT rates, that would be about 125 spaces. That would leave another 125 spaces for the three courts and the training area. So based on the IT rates, you can see that 251 should be more than sufficient to accommodate the traffic that would be generated by the facility.
One follow-up question for the board, because those IT rates are based on full-size soccer.
Correct. Those are based on full-size soccer fields, as far as I know. But generally based on full-size soccer fields. Once again, these are smaller-sized soccer fields, six-on-six.
The last point that you talked about answered exactly my question. You know, modeling against a use called soccer conflicts.
Yeah.
Right, anything else? Some questions in the board? Okay, we'll start with questions from the board, beginning with, this township is this? Let's see, here's, Mr. E.
Can you pass the microphone?
This is a much improved presentation from the last time around. However, I do have a few questions. What are the ages of the youth who will be here? Are they all children? Are they teenagers? Or, essentially, the reason why I'm asking the question is, will they be driving? Or will they be driven here? Will you be using buses?
Yeah. The answer to your question is, most will be driven. There will be some driving, but there will not be buses.
Okay. So basically, your parking is based on the concept that parents will be driving these children?
Either way, they will be driving themselves if they're...
All right. The other thing I wanted to know was, you have asked for an exception, or, sorry, for a variance based on the ordinance. Why would that be necessary? You could work with an exception, which would be far more acceptable and easy to deal with for us.
Honestly, we talked to staff and it didn't come up, but that doesn't mean that, I mean, I'd be happy to talk about it, listen.
Okay, all right. Because that is one of the things I was thinking of, which would make the whole process much easier. You don't need a variance. A variation then goes with the land, and it's just a little harder to justify.
I'll talk to Paul and Jessica about that. Oh, that's the problem, yeah. And we did not publish for a PUD.
The other thing is that there was some concern about the pollutants, which you are not going to be using, obviously, going towards the river. But have you sort of sloped these parking dry lots of the dryways, et cetera, in a way that the sewer system would be receiving everything, or would some flow off towards the river?
When we design the parking lots, we have the drains to be collected in a storm sewer system and routed to the detention basin. It'll be a newly-planted stormwater basin that'll provide water quality benefit. Ultimately, it will discharge to some creek. That's the lower area on the site, that's where the drainage currently goes, but we will not be directly discharging.
Can you please show it to me on that map, just so that we are clear of the thing? So it does get into those two treatment?
Well, that's our detention basin, but the area up here will be collected in a storm sewer.
Okay.
And then routed into the basin, and then discharged over here. And it'll be going through a series of treatment before it gets to the creek.
So you can more or less guarantee that this is not going to find its way directly into the storm creek?
It will not drain directly, no. It'll drain through the detention system, and it will discharge to the creek though. All the drainage from here will go to the creek. It will not go directly out of the parking lot. It can route it through the storm sewers and then through the ponds.
Well, thank you very much for the time being, those are the questions I have.
Should we have any questions? I do.
The microphone.
I did want to go a little bit more on the compensation where you're doing this. Now, is any of this wetland mitigation that you're doing on site, are you mitigating wetlands?
We're not mitigating any wetlands, correct, bro.
And we're not proposing any wetland impacts on this project.
That's good. And then I did have a quick question about the spectators. Will there be tournaments and things like that with these leagues? Because I would suspect that you would have an increase in spectators with tournaments.
With only two of the small turf fields, tournaments are really not a product that we can do. Yes, with the four volleyball, we can have four volleyball courts. We can have two brackets of four teams each per field, so that would be per court. So that'd be 16 teams, 160 players. And once again, the spectators come with them. And the way we schedule it is, there won't be any turn and burn. They come and play their bracket, and then leave, and then we run another bracket. And the championships are on Sunday. So I know you will hear this periodically, go, I feel compelled. It's in our best interest too, to have enough park. We've got no place, we're on an island. So we can't have customers that aren't, don't have any place to park, they're not going to have. So that scheduling falls, as I mentioned earlier, falls into tournaments as well.
Sure.
Mr. Woodcans, you've given us some proposed conditions. Can I ask you to think through two points that you've discussed that I don't see in your conditions? The last one is this question of number of tournaments and spectators. And the other is no walk-up use, whatever that means. Understand it, but I don't know how to phrase it, so.
Okay.
Could you just consider that and...
Yeah, we'll propose...
Give us some draft language?
Yeah.
All right, any questions from either of the other numbers here?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and then to, is Anderson, Mr. Cutter, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
I would just do a follow-up to Mr. Keems. I agree with him that there's a better way to do this than the grant of variants, which will run with the land. They seem amenable to it, but I just want to make sure we don't need to have another hearing or something. It's a lesser award than was published for. But I think they did a good job of showing why they wouldn't need it, and it could be an exception. But they didn't address the hardship, or why if it ran with the land and the present use, conditional use doesn't continue to be there, the person coming in gets that benefit, and they may need it, and then it wouldn't be able to be allowed under the ordinance. So that's, I'm just looking to you to see if we can leave that open and address it just for the, if they agree to it, we can just go right to the recommendation hearing when it comes up, or if we need a second hearing.
Well, we'll consider that. There are some technicalities. We'd have to publish for conditional use for a PUD, and then show these various uses. But we'll try to resolve that before the recommendation hearing. Now, I'm going to go to comments from the audience, if there are any. So everybody that wants to make a comment, would you please raise your hand, or ask a question, or whatever? So I can't see you, sir, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people? Okay, would you all stand and raise your hand and be sworn in? Or you don't have to stand if it's inconvenient.
Would you raise your hands, please? You just solemnly swear a firm, the testimony about to give at this class and our hearing, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, you need to go up to the microphone. When you begin your comments, tell us your name, spell your name for the court reporter. Tell us your address, and then particularly, where you live in relation to this site. If the address may or may not make sense to us. And then tell us whether you support, oppose, or are neutral, and then make your statement. You're only allowed to speak once. And I'll give you a few minutes for each of you. Before the first speaker, I want to indicate that we have some letters from people who were not able to attend this evening. And here is, we have one, Mr. Henry. Others from Bette Puckett and Michael Supa. James and Janice, Sina Wiki, and then Evan Adrian Wells. Those comments have been received in writing, are part of our record. Copy is available to each of the board members. Sir, you want to be first?
Chairman Carroll, I'm representing Timberlake.
Oh, do you want to go first?
Usually I'll speak first.
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Linda Painter. I live at 10 South 221 Hampshire Lane, Willowbrook, Illinois 60527. Chairman Carroll and the members of the zoning board of appeals. I am the president of Timberlake Civic Association, which has 780 homes in the unincorporated area in southeast DuPage County. A few homes are directly adjacent to the property, and they are more affected than the others. They are here tonight to voice their own concerns. I called a special Zoom Timberlake meeting for the purpose of discussing this proposed plan on March 22. The general feeling is that this plan is much, much better than it was last year. We really appreciate the many changes and concessions that have been made to the plans by the developers to accommodate the needs of the Timberlake community. Chairman Carroll, I thank you again for the 20 minutes that you let me speak last year. I will, I will keep it at three minutes today.
You're on borrowed time, because that's 17 original limits.
I know, I know, trust me, I know. And I appreciate it, but today it's going to be three minutes. So out of our meeting the other night came the following requested conditional uses. Our primary request as a community is that no changes in conditions or other variances be applied for in the future. We would like this entered into the part of the conditional use. We were going to put in deceleration line, but you've wiped out that pretty much the whole paragraph. Our only concern is, and I think you also addressed this, is that the owners and managers establish a solid plan for parents to drop off and pick up the children to keep the flow of traffic moving, so the traffic doesn't back up onto Frontage Road. We are concerned that the backup, we are still concerned about the traffic backup on Cass Ave and Frontage Road. Hopefully, the DuPage County traffic study will address this problem. If there are any planned sports events, like you're suggesting tournaments and things like that, maybe on the Saturday or the Sunday, where additional cars will be present, the owners should be required to provide police presence at their own expense at South Frontage Road and Cass Ave to keep the flow of traffic moving. Residents are asking for a six-foot fence instead of a four-foot fence. Previously, they had wanted banners, so we're just putting in there no banners to be placed along Frontage Road. And add that this facility cannot be used for shows, such as garden shows or car shows or anything like that. And we have not seen the photometric plan or landscape plan. I know you have it, I just haven't seen it. And finally, we understand that Lot Two, which is south of this proposed development, is not part of this development. But Lot Two remains a huge concern, because it is so close to the neighbors and the secretiveness of the plans for that property. We just hope that we don't try, they don't try to come back with outdoor fields or some other use as they were proposing last year. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Can I ask, oh, thank you. Is this Exhibit? Sure. I think it is, what's the name of your homeowners association?
Timberlake Civic Association.
Timberlake...
Civic Association.
Timberlake Civic Association, Exhibit One. Let me, I'm going to need some technical help. My understanding is, with respect to the requested first condition, that we have some technical issues about whether this board can bind a future board by opposing such a condition, but could I ask the staff to clarify that for us before our recommendation session? All right, sir?
My name is Erv Schramm, E-R-B, S-C-H-R-A-M-M. I'm 17 West 350 Shield Drive. I'm directly south of this property, and it's going to affect us very badly. First, one quick note on parking. When I go on my grandson's game, sometimes I go from work, my wife goes from home. My daughter will have to pick up her kids from a different event, while my son-in-law takes his son to play soccer. So you could potentially have four cars there, where every kid is playing a game. As far as property values and what, if it's a damage by problems, it could. I mean, you step out of a backyard, I'm going to be looking at this big 60,000 or 70,000 square foot building. If somebody wants to sell my house and wants to show it, somebody comes and looks, and they're going to say, what's that? I could lose sales. You know, I mean, I'd be able to sell a house. As far as my comfort zone, the seventh thing, I'm not comfortable. My wife is my back panel in my backyard. I bought this property because we backed up to the forest preserve, and we had a beautiful horse car. I'm not going to feel comfortable going out on Sunday, looking at this building all the time. And we are worried about if this passes, this is a precedent. So if they're allowed to get the conditional use for recreation property, what happens if they buy back the property that they sold a year from now, two years from now? Then they come for another conditional use purpose to get that recreation. The precedents are already set, so it's a win for them. So that's what we're really concerned about, because then the soccer fields are going outside, and we'll be listening to soccer games all the time, all the time. And the industrial use trend, as they've said... And the industrial use trend, as they've said before, there's one building. One building does not constitute a trend. The trucking outfit is one building. And the traffic, if you go southbound on KSA Avenue, the left turn lane out of 91st Street is about six cars long. When you come off of I-55 to go south, you've got about 35 feet to get over three lanes to make a left turn turn. If there's six cars backed up, anybody coming off of I-55 heading south on KSA will not be able to get into that lane to turn left on Frontage Road. Finally, this is no benefit to our neighborhood. I mean, it's for private use only. It's not like any of us can just take our kids there to play on the soccer fields. So I don't think it's good for the area. I don't think it's wrong to the area, and I oppose it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks.
My name is Glenn Smutney. I own a home at 10 South 060 Lorraine Drive in Timberlake Estates. I've been a resident and or property or in the community there for 51 years now. First point I wish to make or express about the project overall has to do with the general zoning. For the zoning ordinance, as the property is currently zoned, an R2 zoning is established to preserve and maintain existing single-family areas of the county. While the zoning ordinance allows for conditional uses, I would argue that the included various conditional uses are residentially based modifications to the underlying zoning district. I would further argue the defined conditional uses are solidly residentially based and were meant to be in accordance to the zoning district. While recreational and social facilities are an allowed conditional use, I honestly don't believe that those that established the foundation of this ordinance or the people that wrote this ordinance originally intended it to allow for a standalone facility of this scale. Were the board to return a favorable result regarding the conditional use, the resulting area would be more similarly, similar to a industrial zoned district. My second point has to do with the overall scale of the project and to the, and with the parking. And some of the parking issues have been dealt with here already, but I'll still go through them and try to make them be as plain as I can. To date, the only drawings that we have received are the drawings, I think, similar to this particular exhibit. It's a general drawing that does not have dimensions on it. There's a graphic scale, so some of what I'm about to say may not be exactly accurate. But I think it's important for everybody to understand the scale of this building. And I think it's pretty easily done to be able to get a mental picture of it by just going down to the existing warehouse facility at the west end of, of Frontage Road. Just to make a couple of comparisons, first, the height of the warehouse facility is exactly the same height as this facility that is being proposed, 36 feet tall. The width of the front elevation of that warehouse facility is 245, 240 feet in width. I believe, based off of my rough measurements, that the front elevation of this building is 225 feet in width. So the elevation being just 15 feet less than that warehouse is exactly what everybody is going to pass. I understand that they have talked about having six-foot tall evergreens, but if we were to use a scale, more or less, a piece of paper is 11 inches tall. I'm six foot tall. When that tree is planted, that's the tree, and this is the building. So the tree is relatively insignificant in the overall elevation of that building. Finally, the width of the warehouse building is 600 feet long. This building, I believe, is 350 feet long. While I understand that it is very common for developers to request reductions in parking, typically, it's been my experience that there have always been minimal reductions, a few spaces here or there, that amount to just a small percentage. If in fact, the parking is being reduced from 300 to 250 long, that is approximately a 16% reduction in the parking. My question would be, while yes, right now this building is being carefully planned and managed so that parking is accommodated, what happens down the road should this building ever be sold and somebody else that maybe isn't so diligent about it comes in and starts parking? To have people potentially trying to park out on KSA or on Frontage Road would be an absolute disaster waiting to happen. My third point relates to traffic. Traffic not only during the construction of the building, but traffic during, or after the building has been constructed. One question that is not clear, there's a number of different sizes of what this building has been proposed to be. It's my understanding that it's approximately 75,000 square feet, but I'm not sure if that is just the footprint of the building or if that actually accounts for the second floor areas that are being proposed for the building as well. So potentially, it's a larger than maybe if the 300 parking spaces was the appropriate amount. Honestly, I've not done a calculation on it, and I, I was prepared to speak to the 343 spaces that they had originally discussed in the response to the seventh condition. So I apologize for not having the exact numbers. But just to put this into perspective, just to pour a six-inch floor slab over 75,000 square feet is going to require approximately 160 concrete trucks to come down KSA Avenue, or to come down Frontage Road. Frontage Road has a five-ton weight restriction that's placed on it. A fully loaded concrete truck is approximately 35 tons. That's seven times what the road is, is about. So we have 160 trucks coming in, 160 trucks going out. That is purely for floor slabs. That doesn't account for foundations, for structural steel, for all the tilted up wall panels, or for the 120,000 square foot parking lot, thereabouts, for all of the stone base that has to come in and all of the asphalt that's going to go on top of it. Literally, there could be thousands of trucks that roll over that road that are far, far over their normal, the road's weight restriction. And my belief would be by the time this is done, Frontage Road is not in good shape right now, it'll be terrible. As for the traffic, after the building is complete, the discussion or the notes that I have seen state that there'll be 135 cars coming in and 135 cars going out on a Saturday morning on an hourly basis. I could be mistaken about that, but that's, that's my understanding of what we've been told. And that goes from 7:00 in the morning until 11:00 at night. That is a significant amount of impact, particularly on a day when everybody else in Timberlake is home and potentially using the surrounding roads. I'd just like to simply quote Mr. Akeem's statement from the December 3rd, 2020 meeting. "This is an unwarranted intrusion in a quiet family neighborhood, sort of like putting a square peg into a round hole." My final point is very short and brief. Let's not forget that this is a private profit endeavor, or as Mr. Cutter referred to it, this is a personal movement for value. In conclusion, ideally speaking for myself and my family, our pine in the sky desire would be for this property to remain forest preserved and remain green space forever. After all, the whole reason that we're even discussing this is due to a lack of open space and land nearby that can properly accommodate such a facility. I've spent a fair amount of time looking for other sites to suggest to this developer. I know that there is property at I-55 and Route 30 that would be ideal for such a facility. I also know that just a few miles south down in the village of Mokina, there are numerous parcels of land that would be available to suit such a project. We also realize that sometimes we cannot have what we want. We kindly request that the zoning board, or should the zoning board agree to allow such a facility be constructed. You carefully control the overall scale, for example, the height and the allowable floor area, so that there is actually an abundance of parking spaces and maybe even open land along Frontage Road to shield such a building from the view of passerbyers. I do realize the developers of this project have alternative routes that they could take should this not be successful within the DuPage County in order to complete their dreams. I would appeal to the kind human nature of the gentlemen that are looking to develop this parcel. I ask you to work with the forest preserve and protect our neighborhood green space as though the homes backing up to it, as they do, would be as though they were your own homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Who's next? A number of points that have been articulated, so if your position is that you agree with the prior speakers, you can simply indicate them.
Hi, my name is Dawn Schran. I live at 17W 350 Shield Drive in Willowbrook. I am directly south of the development. I oppose this development in every sense of its being. I know this development doesn't belong in this property. I can argue seven conditional use standards and violations that I feel will be violated. The traffic concern on Frontage Road is a major concern. I would like to point out that the traffic study that they did was done during the winter when waterfall land was not being used and the amount of bicyclists and runners were not using the road at that point. We do have a lot of people that visit Forest Waterfall Land, park along the area, congesting everything, along with lots of bicyclists and runners on that road. So it's still a very major concern to me. The concerns of fire and rescue vehicles not being able to access our community when Frontage Road is backed up is a big concern too. The safety to the runners and the bicyclists and the homeowners of the community using the road and passing by the entrance and the exit to this facility with so many vehicles coming and going from it, it's a very dangerous situation. The extra cost to not only fix and repair damaged Frontage Roads during demolition and construction, but also the expense to maintain road in the future with all of the extra traffic is a major concern for us. The increased potential for flooding in our neighborhoods after building on and placing a parking lot on land that's over 50% floodway, 100-year flood plain, and wetlands is a, is a real possibility. The daily long hours of operation with lit parking lot and vehicle headlights shining through our windows is a major nuisance to us. The negative impact on the wildlife and the surrounding forest preserves, again, is potentially a great risk. The diminishing value of our homes due to all of the above mentioned things is also significant. I also would like to point out that the DuPage County Land Use Plan dated January 1990 is in direct conflict with this proposed development. According to that land use plan, a new development should be coordinated with existing infrastructure with emphasis on the cumulative impacts on the area. And if the resulting implementation of the plan raises concerns about the changing character and has a negative impact on the existing residential neighborhood, it shall be protected from development by discouraging higher intensity uses. It also states that flood plains, wet plains, and wetlands and other environmentally sensitive areas will be protected from development and land planned for residential development in these areas will be preserved for housing development. If this land use plan was written to protect a piece of land, this property, this piece of land fits the criteria of one that should be protected from development. This developer has shown from the beginning that they do not care about our community and will do whatever it takes to get their agenda pushed through, no matter the cost or consequences to our community. I'm left shaking my head in disbelief that this developer not only bought this property after being denied at the zoning board of appeals, the development committee, and the county board last year, but they also purchased the land just to the east of it to ensure that they would give themselves a different avenue, that their plans for profit over what's good for our community was a foregone conclusion. I'm hoping that since not one member of the Timberlake community wants this facility in its quiet neighborhood and that this facility is inappropriate and detrimental to our community for this particular piece of property and was the resounding 16 to 0 vote to deny this facility last year by the county board, that the zoning board of appeals will take into consideration all of our concerns and requested additional conditional uses, not only for Lot 1, but also for Lot 2 in the future. And going forward from here, I'm hoping that the DuPage County Board and the zoning board of appeals will do their best to protect me, my neighbors, and my entire community the best that they can to minimize the impact that this facility will surely bring to the homeowners closest to it and our entire community. Thank you very much.
Next. So we have a three-minute limit typically.
Sure.
Some of you are quite close, and so I extend that a little bit. We also have a rule that, you have something that you're going to read to us, just submit it as an exception.
No, these are just notes. I'm going to add a little, but thank you. My name is Joseph Krempel. I live at 9S 662 Lorraine Drive, Willowbrook in Illinois. My property, the backyard, looks directly west, so it would be directly facing the facility.
Just spell your last name.
Krempel, K-R-E-M-P-E-R. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and voice my concerns. I oppose the conditional use of this property. My understanding is the current zoning is R1 and farming. I actually looked at the parcel map today, and you know, once this property goes to a building and a structure and concrete, it's never going to go back. So you know, this is definitely going to detract from the neighborhood and residential and farming zoning, you know? And that was, today I looked at the parcel map. You know, I heard a couple of the comments, you know, that this is trending industrial. It's actually, that is, you know, completely, it's completely opposite. It's actually trending more conservation and nature. Since I've lived in the neighborhood, the neighborhood has contributed to, you know, buying open spaces and donating them to the forest preserve. I was actually part of one of those campaigns that contributed personal funds to have more open space be designated open sport, or forest preserves there. So it's not trending industrial, it's actually trending conservation and nature. So I just wanted to clear that up because that is, you know, blatantly false what the trend has been going towards. As far as the, another statement that is wrong, you know, my property looks directly west. I love the sunset views and, you know, the lights, you know, you say all the vegetation and current existing stuff, you're not going to be able to see the lights. I can already see the lights from the distribution center that was built, you know, in existence, which was our zone industrial, so. And it was an old, old trucking facility, which is why, you know, we couldn't get around that. You know, just yesterday, I had a flock of St. Hill cranes, you know, land in my backyard, and it was beautiful, you know? And I walked the dog, and they had moved from my backyard to the Schramm's area, and they were down there at the bottom of the loop. You know, our neighborhood is very tranquil and peaceful. And, you know, as a number of folks have said, you know, the folks in our neighborhood are not going to be using this facility. This facility is for the elite soccer clubs, you know, as Mr. Norm mentioned, you know, it's, it's, it's not our community that's going to be using this, so it shouldn't be in our community. The traffic, major concern, South Frontage Road. South Frontage Road, the Frontage Road, you know, as people have mentioned, is, you know, disintegrating, you know, and it will get, you know, further disintegrated by all the construction, great point, and all the trucks moving in and out. The Cass-Frontage intersection is a disaster. Another great point, there there are only, Mr. Schram made, there are only like six spaces. And when you're coming off from the South Highway, you know, trying to make it over, I mean, when there's no traffic, I can barely make it over. You know, you're coming off that exit at like whatever it is, at the forty miles an hour, you you can't make it over. If there's two cars, you're gonna cause an accident. There has been serious accidents there. So, you know, major concern with that. And then, you know, the controlling, you know, channelization of the lanes out, people aren't gonna follow that. People put it in their GPS. A lot of the communities that are gonna be in these elite clubs that are gonna be shuttling their kids are coming from areas that are north and east of our area. So they're gonna be actually coming down Claridin Ho, Hills Road, not down Cass, and they're gonna be cutting through the Timberlake Estates neighborhood. And there's nothing, you know, the channelization of the lane is not gonna stop them from exiting because there's a hundred and thirty-five car exit is going to Cass. They're gonna turn right and and go right through our neighborhood and go through Tri-State Village, and there's a number of playgrounds, you know, kids ride their bikes. And it's it's just gonna be a disaster and very dangerous. No one's gonna care. They're gonna wanna get out of there. You know, the safety, solitude, tranquility of our neighborhood is being shattered by this complex. And, you know, to reiterate what a number of folks have said, you know, I do have a major concern about Lot Two. You know, it's a slippery slope. You you know, you give them an inch, they take a mile. You know, this is just one step. They're gonna build this complex, and then once this is built, they're gonna come back and they're gonna put in the outdoor facilities that they originally requested, you know. Everyone says, yes, it's all wetland. You can't do anything with it. You know, the same thing happened with the warehouse. There were wetlands over there, and all you do is throw a chunk of money, hundred and fifty percent somewhere else to buy the wetlands, and then that is mitigated. And now we have soccer fields, outdoor whistles, seven days a week from seven to eleven, and there'll be lights, and it's it's it's, you know, I just oppose this. You know, so this will be a nuisance. It will affect the safety, comfort, and morals of of our neighborhood. You know, and this goes against, you know, the conditional use section, you know, thirty-seven dash fourteen dot thirteen dot five. You know, there's increased traffic congestion, point number four, potential for flooding, point number five, point number seven being a nuisance, just diminishing our our land value. So there's four points right there out of seven that this goes against, you know, so that's the majority. So I would, you know, as you voted in the past sixteen to zero, I would encourage you to vote again sixteen to zero and and shut this project down once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Any else? Okay, there's no, there's a couple of other people that were sworn in, but if you feel that the others have expressed your position, then we'll move on to opposing statement from those.
Just to talk about a couple of issues that were raised. One is the need for the variation, hardship for the variation. The hardship is the fact that there is so much wetland buffer that has to be done here as well as the flood plain that is on the property. The other hardship is the fact that this is not the facility that the zoning ordinance actually envisions when you look at what they're doing. We'll hand out to you, I think it was, it was provided to you electronically, provided to the county electronically. We'll hand out as soon as I'm done Exhibit Seven again, so you can show, see the plot of where the people, how many people, and how that was done a little clearer. As far as increased flooding, this property will not increase flooding. The property actually will, with the stormwater, right, stormwater improvements that are being done by Spaceco will actually slow down the release of water in this count, in this area. Heard from the property owner to the south, as you can see by looking at the picture, I think, was the drone exhibit, I think it was fourteen, you cannot see cars. You can't even see those properties from at thirty-two feet high. You're not gonna see cars at four to seven feet high down in that property. I understand the concern. They don't want it nearby. I understand that, but there will not be lights. And we've also, besides the gate or the fence, as we showed earlier, from all the property owners to the south and southwest, which I think included everybody here, there is going to be a large set of evergreen trees that are starting at six feet and will significantly grow. And no property, I think the one property is about eight-hundred-foot property line in one direction from the south. Everybody else who testified is about sixteen-hundred to two thousand feet away. We're talking significant distance here from this property. Lot Two. Talk quickly about Lot Two. It's not part of the zoning application, so I didn't talk about it, but it cannot be developed in an economic manner. To clean up Lot Two is about two and a half billion dollars. That's how much it will cost to clean up Lot Two. If you think anyone is going to put a bunch of soccer fields, gonna spend two and a half million dollars to build open fields, that can't happen. That's one of the reasons we're not here with that today. It's not a physical possibility. It's just not economical. So in essence, we believe we meet the standards for the conditional use. We believe we meet the hardship standard for the variation for the parking, and we would ask for a recommendation at your recommendation meeting in support of this project. And as far as the other things you requested, we'll obviously present present those to you before the next meeting. Thank you.
If ask the petitioner to consider the request for six-foot fence instead of four, if six feet is not permitted additional variation needs to be requested to resolve that, if you would with the staff, assuming you're willing to consider it. The timing of your project, I trust, is not so urgent that you need us to accelerate this to our April meeting. Can we hold our recommendation on May five, hi five? It's more urgent than that.
Well, they would like the April meeting, you know, the stuff we need, which we will get to, but that's what the staff will have to do.
But let's, I don't know if we'll be able to consider it on four seven, but I'll set it for four seven and then possibly continue it. And, you know, typically, our recommendation sessions are first Thursday of the month. If we set this for four seven and we're one or two documents away from resolving it on four seven, we can hold a special recommendation meeting later in the month of April, so that you wouldn't have to wait till till May five. But for now, it's, if we can't get to it, we actually set for a recommendation session in this room, April seven at five thirty. That's all I have. Nothing else from the board, so we'll close the hearing for the evening. Thanks, everyone, for your participation.